Record.
Oh, I didn't hear record.
Okay, we're good.
Hey, I'd like to call the capital improvement committee meeting to order January 20th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. First, second item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from 113. Which would have been last week's. Did those come out yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, so, but we do have to approve the minutes of the week before that, which I believe was 16. You guys are recalling, that came out just before the last meeting and some members wanted time to be able to review the minutes. So hopefully people had time to review.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of our January 6th, 21 meeting.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes as presented for January 6th, 2021? Yeah, it's going twice. Hey, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You all set, Gavin? Okay, um. Anyone present to speak who's not on the agenda tonight? Anyone, anyone? Nope, guess not. Item four on the agenda, park and rec submitted for CIP. Whoever wants to stand up to the plate for park and rec?
Oh, you should be able to unmute yourself.
I'm here. Um, I actually don't have the documents in front of me, but I think what we proposed were. Thought the first thing up was probably the pickleball court, was that?
Yep, that's one of them.
Pickleball court, um, which is where the sand volleyball court is right now at River Road. We noticed that we don't get much use of the volleyball court and we think it'd be better purposed as a pickleball court. Pickleball is pretty popular and right before Maureen left, she also set up a pickleball court on the basketball court. So someday it'd be nice to get a pickleball court there, fully fenced in. Another one of the things we were looking for was lighting along the back of the walking track. So that people could walk after dark. We are about to install the lights at the basketball. The place cape in hopefully the future pickleball, which is right now volleyball. And with those lights and the parking lot lights, if we added a few pole lights in the back of the track, it would give people the ability to walk that late at night and it's gonna be, we are gonna be open now after dark. Once we get lit up at the basketball court. I think the other thing that was on there was future all purpose field lights, which we've had in CIP for a long time, or at least in the past. With the hope that we could light up the soccer field as an all purpose field and be able to extend time. That's kind of what we're doing right now with the basketball court. If we get lights on that this summer and we still can't get inside gymnasiums, we can at you, we can at least use that basketball court during the day, then at night and probably have more than just open court practice. We could have real games. We could have a summer season. That's the hope.
Stuart.
Yes.
Um, I do not have pickleball in my packet. I have two lighting submissions and I have the turf replacement.
The pickleball was sent, it was inadvertently omitted from the printed packet, I believe Heather sent it to everyone. In electronic form.
Okay. So the request was for year one for, for the pickleball court, $39,346.
Okay, I'll look at emails. I must have missed it. I apologize.
I'm not sure about the differences between volleyball and pickleball, but is the, the current volleyball court, the sand area?
It is, yes. And pickleball would be asphalt with a fence around it. It's kind of like tennis with a different style paddle and like a wiffle ball with holes in it. So it's a slow tennis game.
Okay, so like the, the sand area you're talking about removing.
Right, we're gonna try and repurpose the sand by maybe bringing some to the waterfront. And hopefully leaving behind a small sandbox for kids to play in if, if that's okay.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
They have requested that for the last couple of years. I think it came close to getting approved, but while the going's on, it got pushed out another year.
If I recall, it was, it had baited onto our, our final year list. Um, and then was cut because of COVID with everything else. And Joe, currently you have, if I remember, recall, Maureen had had a lot, the basketball court line for pickleball. So that that could also be used and, and she had some programming for pickleball. So it was pretty popular.
Yeah, right before she left, she actually had people playing on that court in the cold.
Yeah, I, I want to say it was a couple of days a week and it was pretty well attended. Um, it's pretty popular. The downside to doing it that way was we were able to offer different things during the day, but it certainly takes away from basketball. So I think what we saw was that there is a need or a desire from our residents for this particular kind of court.
Yeah, pickleball is, I don't play pickleball, but it seems extremely popular. It's, it's an all ages sport. And even though we did put a pickleball court drawn onto the middle of the basketball court, it was in lieu of the fact that we didn't have a pickleball court. So at least that gave us repurpose that court a little bit. But to have a pickleball court where the sand volleyball is now and then another one on the basketball court, you could have a lot of pickleball down there. You could have tournaments.
Mike, can I ask another question?
Sure.
Sorry, um, and again, I, I'm just asking selfishly. So as a mom of young kids, I know that they love playing in the sand and that, that the current volleyball area. Like every time I go to River Road Athletic, like they, they just, there's always kids there and they're like digging and they're finding things and they're throwing things. It's awesome. I know that you had mentioned taking some of that sand to making a sandbox somewhere else. Could you expound on that a little bit more? Like where you were thinking about it? Would it be like what size? Again, I know this is.
Probably 10 by 10 and adjacent to the little area where the kids have the swings and stuff.
Okay.
And, and I, I know kids love to play in there, but its real purpose is volleyball. And it's a big piece of the property that doesn't get used except for kids to dig in. So yeah, we would keep a small sandbox somewhere close by the swing set.
All right, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Joe, regarding some of these bigger projects in terms of the turf or the lighting of the entire field, are there any other grants out there in the world to help pay for these?
I'm sure there is, and it looks like we have a new rec director. So we're gonna have her get busy looking for grants. No, this is all wish list stuff. And what we found is that the all purpose field just can't handle all the action that it gets and the grass is hard to maintain. So we're shifting people on the field, sometimes using the front half, sometimes using the back half. So turf and lights there would, would be something that we could probably make money off of because it'd be a lot of popularity with local soccer and other lacrosse possibly.
Hey, Joe.
Sure, Mike.
Um, there was, I believe there was a move underway for the property that is just north of the two river crossings and north of River Road Park to be put into a private league for soccer or something like that. I probably, I may not be wording it exactly right, but.
I think you are. I think, I forget, it is a private soccer kind of.
Okay, and, and do we know, is that still ongoing? Do they still plan to do that?
I think they, did they purchase the land, Erica?
They didn't. I think they went through planning and zoning. I don't know if, you know, I'm not sure exactly where they stand, but last I knew they were moving forward.
So, the reason I'm asking, oh, go ahead.
Well, I think what we found is there's never enough soccer fields around.
Right, so I guess that's the reason I was asking is, um, we see as the relationship between these two things. Would, would their field bring more attention and then our field become more popular also? Or would their field take away some of the need for our field? Or do we just not really know at this point?
I, I think it would, it would create more traffic and more popularity.
Okay, thank you.
That, our field gets used, Maureen had a lot of use out of that field with soccer people. She even had to move folks into the baseball diamond so that they could do some exercises and soccer things over there. So I don't, I think you could have three soccer fields down at River Road and a couple more adjacent to it for that private club and still fill those up.
Great, thank you.
I seem to recall at some point there being that discussion that they would, could still potentially use ours in addition to the fields they had. So there was always a request for those fields or that field, which we divvied up into smaller fields.
According to the online tax records, they did buy it. Northeast United Premium Soccer Club, Premier Soccer Club.
I think we'll just tend to make that a more popular spot right off the highway. We've got lights there now. If you had a lit field down the road. Our, our field could be much more popular, but then I think you'd need turf because the field can't take all that action and keep the grass going.
Uh, Joe, could I ask you that? I was gonna ask you about the turf one because, um, could you just sort of outline basic pros and cons we should have in mind? I've, I've got this 60 Minutes story on Kyle Al, what's his name? Kyle Allen? Or whatever, the, the Washington quarterback that had a horrific leg injury and flesh eating bacteria and everything. And they're chalking it up to artificial turf. Um, so just that and, and just overall environmental concerns turf versus grass. And I understand the upkeep shortcut if you have turf, but.
I, I think E.O. Smith has a turf. Isn't E.O. Smith turf over there? Don't they have a turf field?
Yeah, they've had it for quite a few years now.
Yeah, and I don't know that I've heard that there's been a lot of trouble there. I, I mean, I understand your concerns. Anything and everything, a kid could get sick swimming at the waterfront. There was bacteria in the water. I get it, but it's really a durability and use thing. You could use it a lot more fully using this turf.
And that would be for soccer or for the whole area? Or what would that be exactly?
So it'd be the soccer field and there'd be a border around it. But I mean, it wouldn't just be for soccer. I think lacrosse is pretty popular now too. You could probably line it for lacrosse as well.
Thank you.
Wish list kind of a thing. I mean, it would, depending on how the economy turns out and if more people move into town. But no matter how many people live in this town, that location, River Road, is so easy to get to. We get people from Willimantic, Stafford, Talon. Get a lot of users on that field and, and on the basketball court.
Any other questions of park and rec? Okay, thank you, Joe.
All right.
No decisions are made tonight. We wait to the end and then start to juggle all of them together.
Sure.
All ready. Number five, fire department submitted. Toss a coin, who wants to go first? Alex popped up, I guess he does.
He's got 24, have it.
Hey, Alex, what do you have?
All right, I got a few, a few. I'll start with the, replace the SEBA cylinders. Um, this is for $18,475.80 for this upcoming year. Um, this would replace 40, 13, 45 minute bottles and one 60 minute cylinder. They're expiring this upcoming year. DOT regulations prohibit us from using, filling these cylinders, cylinders once they expire. After 15 years from the data manufacturing. If you have the sheets, it's actually broken out by how much per bottle for the 45 minutes and the 60 minute bottle. Excuse me.
What, is there a reason why you buy a 45 minute one and a 60 minute one? I'm, it's really more curiosity than.
Uh, yeah, just, so we have some variations of 30 minute bottles, 45 minute bottles, 45 minute bottles. Just allow the crews to work a little longer.
Okay.
The 60 minute bottle is used more is what we call a rip pack or rapid intervention. Um, to be able to go in and save somebody else.
Thanks.
Alex, if I could perhaps summarize for the, um, so the, the group here, the reason we don't go with all bigger bottles is because they're heavy and they're expensive. So we use smaller bottles where we can and we use the bigger bottles where we, it's worth dragging the extra weight because we need them for something. Would that be correct, Alex?
Sure.
Um, next, the 800 megahertz radio system. This will be a joint project between us and Wellington Hill. The town started going into this system last year with Public Works. Public Works has bought and outfitted almost, they've outfitted every truck, almost every truck. Almost every truck. With this radio system, um, we do have one or two that we can access. Sorry, I'm too many devices going on. Um. So the, the hope is that we'll be able to outfit all the apparatus and officers with this technology as well. This is through the state. They are a little bit expensive, but the radio, the work, the way the system works, we can actually talk one end of the town to the other on a portable radio most of the time without an issue. Stuart or Tom, did you want to add to that?
The bulk of the radios we have now, um, the portables were purchased between 2003 and 2005. Some of the low band radios or predate me joining the department, you will let you guess how long that's been. So technology has marched on. The, one of the nice thing is the infrastructure behind the radio system is owned by the state of Connecticut and they are responsible for maintaining it. So if a tower gets hit by lightning or something like that, we don't have to pay to fix it. That's all on the state. The, um, the only thing we're responsible for are our own local radios, ones that we put under the vehicles or give to an officer.
Chief Snyder, anything to add to that?
Yeah, no, just what you guys said, the radio system, they're getting outdated. We have, we have a lot of communication gaps. A lot of dropped communications that it can't fix without a new system. And like Stuart said, the, uh, the infrastructure behind it is set up by the state and home and maintained by the state. So, um, it seems to be working everywhere else. It's working with Public Works. Uh, and I think we could tie in with dispatch without any issues. So it's something that's much needed.
I will mention, I believe the school's looking at, um, and I think we heard Phil talk about it last week with us.
Yep.
Um, asking for the same thing. I will say from the town's perspective, it's incredibly improved communication from Public Works all over town. So where they couldn't, having difficulties communicating in the past, they don't have that anymore. I think the only complaint I hear is that they probably need a couple more portable. So everything has a radio. So it's, it was definitely well worth the expense. I, I notice your notes here, Alex, say that, you know, some municipalities not only use deep, but some of their CARES funding. Um, that may be something for us to think about if some funding comes around again. And what I understand is a, a to be proposed stimulus plan from the new administration.
Right, so if there's some more CARES funding, this does fall right into that program, so.
Alex.
Yep.
Or, or Tom, um, just, uh, first of all, I've stayed from the fire department side. I've stayed pretty much far away from developing these requests because I'm on this committee and because I'm on board of finance. So, um, that's why I'm bringing you questions now for things you might think I should. But, um, it looks like what you're saying in this proposal that these are essentially gonna take place of all of the fire ground communications that you use right now. Cause you're talking about replacing.
In the future, it will. It will not right away. Um, there is a plan through the dispatch center at some point to the system. That's what we're being told. Unfortunately, it's costly and, um, on our day to day calls where it's just us that are running, we can do it. It's the larger incidence that we would solve the revert back to the older system for now.
Okay, so I guess the questions are and also where some of my concerns are because we have for years, not only are the taxpayers paying into, uh, through our money to town dispatch, we're paying to maintain a big radio system for the 911 dispatch center that we operate through. We're also paying, uh, we've paid a lot of money to move into narrow banding and then to move off of low band. Now we're being told we have to move off low band. So we're buying UHF and VHF equipment. And then this is another higher frequency band. So it's a huge amount of money of taxpayer money buying radio equipment. Um, which is awesome for the radio manufacturers. And obviously as a 30 some year firefighter, I want good radio equipment. But I'm concerned about how many different systems we have and money we're spending on buying system to then find out it's gonna be made obsolete. And now we're buying another system. I mean, we're not even done converting over to UHF right now. And now we're talking about buying 800. So that just worries me.
There is, there is a hook into TN system right now for testing purposes, 3378 to 800. And that's been up and running for six or eight months now. And as, uh, time marches on, they expect to basically put 80, the equivalent of 86 and 48 and all the other low band channels crossed to both UHF and 800 altogether. So we still will be able to talk together with all this. So it isn't like we're just going out on a radio system or channel on our own and say, oh gee, you know, we can chit chat among ourselves. The, that's moving forward at TN as we speak. In fact, if you listen to the chase meetings tonight that's going on, uh, you might hear some, uh, talk about a bond package of what they're trying to set up to encompass these radio system. In terms of obsolete, 800 megahertz and 700 P20, called P25 Phase 2 is as advanced as a least non-military market can buy. It's, I hate to use the expression latest and greatest. Uh, it's been up and running for several years with the state police. And they've opened it up for municipality use about a year and a half ago. Their main reason for opening it up, and I can send you the link to the, uh, TV station that interviewed one of the bigwigs at Homeland Security is interoperability. That the 800 system, uh, pretty much all the state agencies are either on it or going on it in terms of the state DPDW, DOT, uh, state police, uh, deep. They're all in this 800 system. Um, I talked with the guy that manages the system in Ohio who's teaching one of the classes. They have, I think, over 200,000 radios on that system now. And the state promises that one, they're not gonna charge anything. And two, they're maintaining the infrastructure on that system, which is worth millions of dollars. Ask them what it takes to just bring up one site. They said one full fledged site's over $200,000 and we don't have to pay for that. So in terms of looking into the future, um, it's the best we, we can get.
Yeah, I think it's developing out of necessity as well, just like the public works. That's not developing just because it's the latest and greatest system. Although that is part of it, but it's developing for us anyway because our communications are terrible. And it's detrimental to safety because again, just like public works, they had dead spots, couldn't talk to each other. Um, and UHF, the high band we work on now is just not cotton. They thought it was going to, but it's just not.
The problem with the UHF system, Mike, is it's not a system. It's a whole bunch of siloed UHF to low band repeaters that don't talk to each other, don't, uh, compare signals, call it voter receive. And things like that. And so example being, you know, I was in the bottom of Old Farms Road. I'm on one radio system that in theory is compatible and the Wellington Hill truck is sitting 50 feet from me. And I can see him talking into the mic and we can't hear him because he can't bounce back to the repeater. He was going for, the systems eventually become more and more complicated and harder to use. Is you have to figure out what part of town you're in to what radio system you wanna tie into. And it's just, you know, if I know if I'm west of Ruby Road, I can talk through the town system. But if I go east of Old Farms, I gotta try to hit the Wellington Hill repeater. But if I'm further to the north, I could go for the Union repeater. And there's no lines drawn anywhere to demarcate which one you need to be on.
So I'm, I'm painfully aware of that. And, and when I go, you know, I, I, I have to work in that system myself. And I, I think there are a lot of good prospects with this system. But talk about moving to, to a more complicated system technologically. And it's more internet dependent and other system dependent. The reason we're having trouble with UHF is because we were told this is the latest, greatest. And we have to move off of low band to go to this because everyone's going out of low band. When we used to have low band, we could reach everywhere in town. And then we went to this 400 that you said, as you're correct, is not an organized system. And we're still paying to make that move right now. And now we're being asked to pay to make another move to a different frequency. Again, I'm not trying to shoot it down. I'm just trying to say I'm concerned. These are incredibly expensive systems. And when we were moving off of low band to the current UHF, we're being told this is the way to go. This is the new thing. And, um, so I think we just have to be really careful that we're not paying for two systems and then deciding next that 800 isn't working. Because one thing we know about 800 is it transmits over very short distance. So we, so it is very dependent on all those extra repeaters and towers operating properly. Um, and it does seem to be operating properly. I agree. I'm just concerned with the amount of money to keep buying systems and keep the, keep making, uh, the radio companies rich. And are we for sure getting the right thing for our community? Cause it is a lot of money.
Yep. Anybody else?
Any other questions?
Radios?
All right, moving on, uh, purchase of the ambulance. Um, this was originally slated to be replaced this year. Um, we've opted to try to push it out to 22, 23. Um, the ambulance should be paid off now. So we're trying to pay it off, excuse me, have a fund 17 generate a little bit more money before we purchase a new truck. Um, we are still trying to evaluate whether we're going to, um, try to increase to a second ambulance. So keep our current truck, um, with everything in it. And when we buy a new truck, have it as a, um, that would replace it, but keep ours as a second or a backup. Um, one of the things we've learned, especially when our truck goes out of service, it, it's hard to, you know, if it's out for a week, that means we're not doing transports. We're not generating revenue into fund 17 for that week. Or two weeks, depending on how long it's out. So we're, we're trying to still evaluate, um, whether that's beneficial or not to do.
Can I ask a question? So you have this broken out over years two through five.
Yep, so usually it's the, sorry.
Is your, is the plan to purchase it in 22, 23? And then the dollar, the 50,000 in years three through five are the lease representing the payment?
Yes.
That first year of the 25,000 is estimated just to buy it six months into the year. So there would only be six months of payments as opposed to 12 months. So that's why that first year was lower.
So this is a lease, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Um, next one.
What's the total cost, Alex? And I know you're saying you get a million, so is it?
We have it about, we have it right now at 300,000. And that's just by going off of some of the surrounding departments that have replaced trucks um, recently. That's, that is not us going out to bid.
So when you have the million under donations and other resources.
That's what's going into fund 17 from.
Thank you. Thank you.
We typically generate revenue in excess of two hundred thousand per year. Out of that, that's some of that pays for the paramedic services. It pays for the ambulance payment. It's paid for all the fire trucks, almost all the fire trucks you see in town. Uh, a little bit goes into the fire department payroll account. Um, so having that revenue pays for a lot of stuff in town. Um. And it certainly puts a big burden on primarily Yukon and a little bit of Stafford and Talon to come over if we're out of service week or two.
Any other questions regarding the ambulance? All right, uh, next one I have is the addition to station thirteen. Um, so this has been on the plan for quite a while. Um. The town put in uh seventy five thousand dollars about five or six years ago, start?
Uh, yeah, something like that.
Um, to um. To get original plans as to what, you know, what we need, how to build it, not how to build it, but what we could actually make work on our site. Um, you know, and it's coming more and more prevalent now, um, especially with COVID going on and um. Our our station is very small, um, you two people in the building, twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. Um. So we were really hoping to get this project moving. This year would be for eighty thousand dollars for um the final planning, engineering inspections. Um, and again, it's to provide the training meeting areas, bunk room, storage, additional office space. Um. Our station's always been an adequate garage, um, but it is not. Adequate for a firehouse. Um, anybody that's been into our firehouses sees that, you know, we really have two rooms for everybody to work out of. Um, and it's tight. Um, and when you're trying to socially distance and, you know, we have, it's hard inside that building. Once things start lighting it up with COVID or, you know, even if we want to make appointments of people that actually come down and see the station. We're more than willing to let people come in and see what the conditions are inside that firehouse. For for two people to be in there for twenty four, you know, twenty four hours a day. It's not adequate.
I, can I, can I also mention it's in some of you have had to work in there. It's also our uh E O C, the Emergency Operations Center for the town. So when there are large events, like most recently tropical storm Isaias. Um, it's inadequate at best. It's it's the sleeping quarters for their staff, but at the same time. Um, trying to manage um a facility in there. So you you you're trying to juggle that, right? The fact that they have a member that um if they're not on a call in the middle of the night needs their sleep. If we need something, you know, we begin early. It's very difficult. Um, yeah, certainly. I would suggest, and I think this has been done by this group, we a different group of people than there are now, um, a field trip to see some of these things that. Um, folks are asking for that are inadequate. The the um bathroom locker room facilities are inadequate at best. So it's, it makes it challenging. I know from from my perspective, when we um need to use that as an emergency operations center. It's, it certainly doesn't, you know, it it does the trick because we make it work. It doesn't mean it's adequate. Um, and it's done well. I appreciate their hospitality, but it's not, that one multipurpose room cannot do all the functions it's meant to.
Right.
Do you ever have OSHA issues with those facilities?
Knock on wood, no.
Okay.
Alex, uh, could you just like um detail the eighty thousand a little bit? It's so it's it's planning or design or?
Um, it's the final design and um construction documents to be able to go out to bid.
Thank you.
And and then the subsequent years, um.
That would be the bond payment once they were actually started.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And was your ass? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Christina.
Seventy five for equipment? That's just.
That would be the original um desk, stuff like that.
All phone systems.
Phone systems, offices, stuff like that.
So is your request for really two items in two years? The conceptual designs in year one of this plan and then the actual work done in year two?
In year two.
I understand.
Yep.
The original plan was when the library was about to be paid off um for a similar dollar amount. That if this plan was approved, would roll the firehouse payment into the system, the library would come off. And so the uh, the end result is it wouldn't be a big jump in the tax uh. Rates because of that, that the three million dollar library got paid off and this would come on. That was the original plan for the last five years or so.
This will put us a little bit ahead of that, right? Like I have to show the library coming off bond in twenty twenty seven.
Right. Yeah, I'm part of it, and I wish John Patton was here because he understands it much better than I do. Maybe Donna can pipe up. Uh, the whole bond thing, there's a uh bond anticipation note that comes out ahead of the bond. And you can, in essence, I believe defer that a year, so to speak, so at least gets the ball rolling of a. For all the timing of when things come on and come off, the that you actually do the building, I guess, from that bond anticipation note. Then that rolls into the actual bond when the construction is complete.
Uh, Stuart, one point of clarification. Um, we were talking about the bond expiring or or paying down on the library. Um, that conversation actually started uh way back when the library first was bonded. And um, the conversation was when Wellington Hill uh was coming, looking for money to buy land on Ruby Road. For a new fire station. That's what they were told also. So basically, everyone looking for a new big building in town has been told for years, you have to wait until the library is done getting paid for.
Any other questions regarding the addition? All right, uh, next on mine is replace the fit test machine. This is a joint project between Wellington One and Wellington Hill. Um, our current fit test machine, which does our air packs, um, is no longer supported. Um, it's out of date. Um, it is a requirement that we have to um every member wearing an air pack. Um, and furthermore, anybody wearing an N ninety five mask has to be fit tested. Um, this would allow us to do our own in-house testing. Um, the machine we currently have, we can still get by with testing some. Um, but we cannot use it to test the N ninety fives. Um, so this would allow us to. Do those for both departments.
Does this machine travel between both departments? You just leave it stationary at one and you just go back?
It'll travel between both.
Yeah, we usually won't allow, I know Wellington Hills borrowed it for weeks or months at a time, and then if we need it, we just call them up and get it back. Um, the current machine is no longer supported at all. Biggest thing is we can't even get it calibrated anymore. And we bought it back in two thousand and five, probably from a grant. Um, but no longer supported, no parts available, and they can't even calibrate it to make sure it's reading correctly. Um, we actually have to keep this old computer around because I think it runs under Windows ninety five only.
Yeah.
Um, and then they haven't up, they won't update the software because they have the new unit, of course, that they want to sell. Uh, the biggest change is the new unit can test the N ninety fives, which are the higher level medical masks that we wear. Uh, and the mass that we can't even buy. So we've been relying on the state of Connecticut's supply. Of whatever they bought on the open market that they uh gave us. Unfortunately, there's probably a dozen or more different brands of masks, let alone the sizes they come in. And you have to be tested for every one of those. You just can't be tested on one. It's they, oh, okay, you know, you're all set for all these other N ninety fives. Every single brand has to be tested on every single person. To make sure the sealing correctly. Um, and right now we don't know if they're sealing correctly, both in terms of size. Because sometimes some brands will fit some people, will seal well on some people, and they won't seal on others. Um. So that's the thing that's kind of come up this year that's pushed us along that, um, you know, we need some assurance that. The N ninety fives that we're wearing are properly sealing to hopefully protect us from. Who we're carrying around in the back of the ambulance in that confined box.
Any questions regarding that? Chief Snyder, any comments on it?
Well, like Stuart said, the fit test machine goes back and forth. It's kind of a fifty fifty split. And it works out great for us because we can't just pick a night and say, everybody be there. Uh, it doesn't fit every schedule to borrow a machine or have somebody come out and test us. Um, so again, having here for the length of time is is great because as people roll in, week after week, we can just get them all tested and marked off the list for everybody to play. So like I said, it's well worth the money and it's not that much, so um, it's shared by everybody. It's well worth it.
All right, the last, if there's no other questions regarding that, I have one more. Um, this kind of goes on with the um station addition. Um, we repair the front aprons. Um, aprons are the transition from the interior of the bay floor out to the pavement. Um, the original concrete aprons failed many years ago. Um, and were removed and covered with asphalt, excuse me, asphalt. Uh, since the pavement has started to crack, uh, it's been compressed by the trucks. Um, so where now allows water, cold air, everything else into the bays. So excavation is needed in the front of the station, um, and the concrete forms installed. Um, so this was for thirty thousand dollars starting or for next fiscal year, twenty two, twenty three.
And I ask a question, the the addition that you're asking for in the same year?
Yep.
Any of that work affect?
We could wrap it all into one, um, because there will be pavement work that has to be done to the, um, but. Excuse me, our fear is that if it doesn't, if the addition doesn't move forward, we still have to, we have to get this done. This is causing a huge heating issue with heat just rolling out the bay doors.
If you're looking at the building, is the addition slated to go on the left or the right hand side of the?
Looking at the left side.
Okay. Thank you.
Well.
Any questions regarding that? I think that's all I have.
Stuart, are you frozen? Oh, I think we lost Stuart, maybe? You're, now you're muted.
Yeah, go on back.
So this is my turn?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so first year, twenty one, twenty two. I have in there uh service one forty nine, which was uh slated and um, I believe it was funded before COVID. It was due to be replaced uh last year, got pushed off. Um, price stayed same seventy thousand. I do have um quotes that I sent in um along with my. Uh, requests and there's two, there's two quotes here from two different Ford dealers. Um. Uh, one from a uh, from a Ford, which is thirty eight thousand, and that's for the vehicle alone. The other one's thirty nine thousand. Um, and so again, that's for the vehicle alone. And on top of that. Um, it hasn't changed from last year with the um, about approximately twenty thousand in uh radios and lights and all that to be fitted in the vehicle. Uh, most of them are vehicle specific, especially with the new vehicles. Um, and uh, cabinetry for the back, for the radios and the supplies and all that for safe storage. Um, so that's my first submission. If anybody has any questions on that.
So, so when I look at these quotes, you're looking at about forty thousand for the vehicle and thirty thousand to outfit it? Is there anything of the vehicle you have that's reusable?
The only thing we could do, it that will vary a little bit. Um, but the only thing we can do, and I have quotes that include radios. Again, like you talked about earlier, radio system is kind of up in the air. Uh, and our radios are in the same situation as thirteen is they're they're getting really old, so. I hate to put a uh close to twenty year old radio in a new vehicle. Uh, but you know, again, that that price may or may not include radios, which would probably deduct about five thousand dollars.
Can you tell me how much money you've put into repairs in this vehicle?
Well, we've been putting off the the major repairs. We've done, um, I don't have the numbers in front of me right here for the budget. We've been putting off the major repairs. The major repairs are our concerns with some rust issues, rust on the wheels. Um, and like I said before, in previous years, the transmission slipping, the exhaust manifold are are cracking. Um, and so again, these these issues have slowly getting worse, but again, the uh. Uh, you're looking at four thousand dollars for the exhaust manifold to be done. Uh, you're looking at four thousand dollars for the transmission to be done. And the value of the vehicle last year was around four thousand dollars.
But have you put any money into repairs? I think I I feel like this is about the third year. We've heard it has big repairs, but you haven't spent anything else. I'm just curious.
No, 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 we haven't spent a big money on repairs. Um, and the reason being is because we don't feel it's. A good idea to spend more money on repairs than it is to the vehicle's worth. That's why we haven't. Yes, fortunately, they've been, the vehicle's been holding out. But uh, like I said, it's not going to hold out forever. It's a two thousand eight or two thousand six uh SUV. And like I said, it's getting up there in age. It's got these major issues that we are putting off. I mean, that's why you don't see any big repairs. We're doing the service on it. We're doing the general repairs, you know, brakes, tires, or what have you. Um, but to, again, in my opinion, it's not the best use of taxpayer money to to sink eight thousand dollars into a vehicle that's worth four thousand dollars. And it's already that old, it's two thousand six, so it's just seems like. A bad use of funding. And it's a first response vehicle. It goes to everything. So it's all medical, it goes to, you know, every call, it goes to training, it goes to errands, it goes to. Basically, everything. It's done quite a bit.
Even if you spent eight thousand on it, that's be less than the annual payment for the lease. So even if it lasted just one year, you're ahead of the game.
I mean, again.
I understand what you're saying, Tom, and we're in the, a little bit of the same boat with public works vehicles, but you know, we have to repair them because a replacement isn't a guarantee, so to keep them functioning. So that's what what I, I just. For a couple of years now, we keep hearing that there are lots of things going wrong, but um no actual costs to. Maintain them, so that's.
Yeah, just because I'm trying not to spend. Again, it's because I'm trying not to spend that kind of money on a vehicle that's not worth it and and it's that old. And it's a first response vehicle. It's not just a pickup truck that we can park on the side and not use it again, you know, if you end up. If this goes down, we're going to use the heavy rescue, which doubles the expenses to operate brakes and tires and all that. Yeah, it's it's uh something that, again, we could put some money into it and get another year or so out of it, but it seems to me. That's just a waste. It's not the best use of the money.
And Tom, what would you plan to do with the old vehicle once you got a new one?
Uh, typically, we just sell the vehicles and either they make an arrangement with the town, the tax money goes back to the town for the contract. Or we'll make arrangements to put um the money towards the expenses or something like that. Uh, we could certainly do something like that to duck off the radio cost or the light cost for the new vehicle. Um, you know, it just depends on how it unfolds.
And how much you think, again, like that goes for?
Again, just looking at Kelly Blue Book last year was right around four thousand dollars.
Four thousand.
Last year. I mean, it's a script. Yeah, yeah, that's last year, so I'm assuming it's going to be a little less this year. Um, and again, it's it's sight unseen. That's just Kelly Blue Book. That's not a written guarantee. When people see it, see the wheels are rusting and and see the issues that are with it and stuff, I'm sure it's going to be less, but. I would say somewhere in the three thousand dollar neighborhood.
Have you looked at government surplus vehicles?
Yeah, well, not surplus vehicles. Um, what we look at is the uh government pricing. That's where we get this pricing, is the federal, the state bid pricing. And that's where we get these prices. The vehicle would be significantly more to replace this than thirty eight thousand dollars. Um, to buy that vehicle outright.
The reason I break it up, bring it up is because the state and the feds both have online auctions for vehicles, and I found. And there's all kinds of stuff out there. Um, for example, I found a uh twenty twelve. Truck with a plow with ten thousand miles on it. For auction. You get that, I don't know, I'm exaggerating, but you can get it. You get that, I don't know, I'm exaggerating, but you can get it for a buck. You know, it depends on who bids on that kind of thing. And sure, it's a twenty twelve, but it only has ten thousand miles on it. And if you only pay five hundred dollars for it, what do you build? You know, if it goes belly up, you've only lost five hundred bucks.
I'm a regular.
Have you attended a couple of state auctions? Go ahead, Mike.
I'm a regular watcher of the auctions myself, and I've also sent a lot of vehicles to the auction. I think what Chief Snyder is looking to do is make a government auction vehicle from this. I don't, I I think you, I think there are the rare really good deals like you're talking about, the ten thousand mile truck. But most of the government vehicles have served their purpose already, and this is a government vehicle that has served its purpose, I'm guessing.
But what I thought was federal, it wasn't state. I know there's a state site. It doesn't have as much, but the feds have all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, I haven't, to be honest with you, I haven't looked at federal auction sites or federal auctions. Just in my opinion, in my experience, I've been to a couple of state auctions. Like you said, it's not state, it's federal, but I have been to a couple and most of the vehicles, like Mike said, have seen their run the course, you know, even if they're low mileage, they're rusting or they're at the auction for a reason. And it's typically what it is. Yeah, you can get a good deal and stuff, but again, you know, going into a another used vehicle from somewhere that it deserves to be at an auction. It's just to me, opening a can of worms to getting it here, finding out what's wrong with it, putting more money into it, and as a first response vehicle. Again, something that goes to every medical call. It goes, it's the first out for all of all the calls for us in terms of medicals. I really would hesitate to do that.
How about purchasing vehicles that are a year or two old instead of brand new?
Typically, the ones that are a year or two old are going to be consumer vehicles. So they're going to be something somebody leased and traded in and you're going to pay more than what we're going to pay for a brand new vehicle. And again, the thirty eight thousand dollars is through state bid pricing. It's for a special service vehicle, S S V, which comes with a lot of things deleted out of it, like it comes with vinyl formats. It comes with, as you can see in the in the breakdown. So again, the price is going to be significantly more than, I mean, you price an SUV or Ford Explorer or something in that neighborhood. That's turned in lease, you can probably pay also fifty or so without any radios, without any modifications. Like I said, this comes with the deleted console in the middle to fit radios. So now you have to do that. You have to fit radios where there's a a console for coffee cups and singer lighters in a in a consumer vehicle that's a year or so old off lease. There are no, in my experience, there are no special service vehicles a year or two old or right off lease. They go to police departments, fire departments, and they're used and then they're sold at auction.
Okay, thanks.
Orlando, you do have me thinking though on this. As I was thinking through your comments, there is a dealership right up in Eastford, Connecticut that sells used and refurbished ambulances. And they sell nationwide. I wonder if that's an opportunity to save on a three hundred thousand dollar ambulance purchase.
Certainly worth the look, you know? Can you do a trade in to someplace? I'll take goats and boats and you know, everything else, you know, can we trade in some of our vehicles? No, I'm kidding. I know, I know.
You'll give us goat value.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a goat.
Okay, any other questions on the first one? All right, moving on, the property across the street, we are getting closer in terms of permits and just satisfying all the necessary adjustments to occupy the facility. So we really do need to have surveying and architecture come in and check the facility, survey the lines, survey the property. Architects come in, look at the buildings and as it states here, it's going to allow us to make the best use of the property. So we can, we can use the property to the property lines. We can clear the property lines. We know we're not on the neighbor's yard. It also allows for future planning for building and and training and things like that. And also it allows us to define exactly what the building is capable of, the church is capable of and things like that in terms of expansion or training and use of the facility. So especially in terms of the surveying to get clear boundary markers to get everything marked up so we know exactly where the property line is. There are some drawings and stuff, but we need updated surveys and things like that. So that's what this one's for.
What stipulations has planning and zoning put down in terms of the use of that property? Is it zone for what you need it to be and that sort of thing?
Yeah, I mean, once the once the satisfied issues are satisfied, which again, they are are basically done. We need to put in a, I forget what it's called, Mike, you can correct me. The furnace needs a little diverter, I think it is. But other than that, yes, the planning and zoning was going to allow us to use the building for whatever we need to use it for. Basically, the same as what we use this facility for, other than parking fire truck. Training, meetings, all that stuff, the use of it for other other organizations in town, stuff like that is all going to be acceptable. And then the house is just a whole different, whole different thing. We are planning on using the house other than maybe office space or storage, which is fine as well until we move forward with planning and zoning to consider renting or something like that with the house.
Do you need to obtain a certificate of occupancy for the church in order to use it?
Stuart, you mind if I comment?
No, anybody.
The church and the house have existing certificates of occupancy and they are still in force. The compliance needs that are being met now is the building permit for what's called change of occupancy, which does not remove the certificate of occupancy. It just updates it to a different classification of use according to the code. And we've been chipping off the things on that, like the parking lot, the new handicap spaces were just painted over the last two weeks. The signs got put up last week for the handicap parking spaces. There were a multitude of other things. There's a, I think, a fourteen page eighty two hour work hours worth of report that was done to satisfy the building inspector's needs. And I think it's down to one or two items left for the building inspector to sign off on the change of occupancy permit. And that's the only remaining item at this point. Zoning is satisfied. We have an active approved zoning permit and it's just completing the building permit requirement for change of occupancy.
Okay, thank you.
Again, that brings, like I said, back to the request with all these things being said, and we've been approached by several organizations to use the property throughout the time period that we've had it. We still need to have clear boundaries and clear property survey and make sure everything's marked clearly and so we know exactly what we're doing there. Any other questions on that one? We can move on to twenty two, twenty three. I have my first one here is to replace the SCBA air packs, the nineteen ninety four air packs upgraded in two thousand four and be noncompliant with NFPA in twenty twenty three. I've brought this up for the last couple of years with the understanding that, you know, it can be pushed off to twenty twenty three, twenty two, twenty three, I should say. So again, it's kind of one of those things that if we, if they're not replaced, they are out of service and we don't have air packs for the firehouse. So again, that means nobody goes in the buildings or smoke or puts out any fires or does anything near fires. I did submit a quote. Make sure you're in front of me. Did submit a quote. And the pricing did include air bottles that will that is not on there. So again, if you deduct the price of the air bottles on the quote, it's about a thirty thousand dollar reduction from their total quote, which brings it to ninety one thousand, basically ninety two thousand dollars and about five thousand dollars for masks and and things like that. We do have privately fitted masks for most of our members so that they are in the right size and they are in the right location stuff. So that people are fitted to the proper size when when in an emergency, there's not a lot of time to sift through a large, a smaller and a medium to find the right size. So that's kind of included in there. So with a little bit of a leeway and stuff like that, I have on here a hundred thousand dollars currently on the quote deducting the air bottles. It brings it to about ninety five thousand dollars. So that's that's where we are with that. So again, it's it's with a couple of extra masks and a couple of extra things like that in that nature, right around a hundred thousand dollars or or less. Between ninety five and a hundred, I have a hundred thousand dollars in there to make sure. But again, this is something that is critical in life saving. It can't be compromised. It can't be used past the state. Liability issues, maintenance issues, things like that come up. And again, going into a burning building is something that your equipment has to be not compromised. So again, that's where we are with that. It's any questions on it?
I I have a couple of questions. So the quote is I I don't know what all these things are, so I'm going to ask you. So you have two items that you need fourteen of and one is twenty eight. So are these including the cylinder similar to what Chief Moore asked for? Like all new cylinders to go with these packs?
Well, if you remember a couple of years back, we replaced our cylinders because our cylinders reached their drop dead date, I guess I should say, just like thirteen is doing now. Ours ours reached that date earlier, so ours were already replaced. We have all new cylinders.
But what is this?
That's the thirty thousand dollars.
What is this thirty thousand dollars for? Okay.
That's the cylinders. So again, take that off of there.
Okay.
Right, take that off the quote. It comes to ninety five, about ninety five thousand dollars, a little bit more, about ninety six thousand dollars for the top two line items, Erica, are the the packs themselves and the harnesses.
All right, thank you.
So again, you put in there the between the ninety five, ninety six thousand dollars and a hundred thousand dollars, you buy masks and stuff like that to go along with it. You're right there at the hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
So again, our bottles are all new, all compliant.
So that's what you were talking about, that Tom, that thirty thousand coming off the hundred twenty seven thousand total bid, right?
Correct. Yep, yep, take the thirty thousand off the hundred twenty seven thousand dollar quote. He put that in there and I didn't have time to get back to him to send me a quote without it. So again, that's the bottles that we've already replaced a couple of years ago through C I P. Okay. Moving on to the next request on this, again, twenty two, twenty three year. Moving forward in the twenty five Old Farms Road project, we do have the property. We do have, are going to be getting surveying hopefully and use of the property at this point. So I have in here a hundred thousand dollar request based on similar projects for engineering and design of a firehouse. So it would give us a a picture of exactly what it would cost to, you know, and different options as to what it would cost to put a facility there and move our operations across the street. Keeping in mind, you know, the ownership of the property that we currently are in would be after this whole project goes through and and the new firehouse and new facilities are put at twenty five Old Farms Road across the street. This property still has value. The last we were told somewhere in the three to four hundred thousand dollar range. So again, that's something that would be, this building would be something would be sold for some kind of deal worked out with the town or somebody, anything that can be done with it in terms of the property here. But this this engineering and stuff, like I said, will give us a better picture as to exactly what the options are across the street. And also allow us to get better pricing to move forward on construction and building across the street for a new files. Any questions on that? Okay. These, this next project is for twenty three, twenty four. I have thirty five thousand dollars to repair and cover the concrete in the apparatus bays of the current firehouse, fill in the cracks, seal them with epoxy. This price, to my surprise, is a little bit high. I did receive a quote. It was hard to pin somebody down to give me a quote, but the price that I did receive recently, and I don't have it in writing, but I don't have it to you guys, I should say, I do have it in writing, is about twenty five thousand dollars. So again, we're right at twenty five thousand dollars. That would reduce this request by ten thousand dollars. And again, you know, we've talked about this before, why we haven't put in a lot of big repairs or a lot of repairs to this facility and stuff. There are big repairs like this that are needed. And again, we kind of put it off knowing that the project across the street was coming to fruition. So you know, it's obviously going to take a lot longer than than a couple of years to do things across the street. So this this property needs to be preserved in terms of the concrete on the floors. And you'll see the next quote that I submit is for the parking lot. But this one here, like I said, a lower than this, a twenty five thousand dollar estimate was given to me. And again, it's to cover the bay floors that are cracking and the concrete's peeling and chipping and all that stuff. Questions on that one? Okay, like I just mentioned, I'm going to move on to the next one, which I have in twenty four, twenty five. It's the parking lot repair. We did have this in C I P at one point and then there was discussion to take it out because the across the street project as well. And the quotes that we did get for repaving were not, I guess, not going to happen. There's no way that the pricing that was given to us was was going to do the job. So we had to get re new pricing and stuff like that from asphalt vendors. Again, this is to pull up the parking lot that we have. I've asked not Troy, but Derek, the last public works, he came over, looked at it and said it was beyond repair. And I believe Troy actually came through, but I don't remember if he gave me an answer on it or not to look at it. But again, it's cracked and crumbling in several places. Potholes, a couple of which were filled in when the public works did a couple of close jobs. So again, it's to have the parking lot pulled up, regraded and repaved. I'd like to see this project to be combined with other paving projects. Thirteen has a project that they are looking to do in front of their bays with you know, repaving and regrading and all that stuff. I'd really like to work with either public works or willing to want or both and combine some of these, some of this with other paving projects. So hopefully we can get a better price than this. This is a price that I've got just for our facility. So I'm assuming that if we combine a couple of projects, it will come in a little cheaper per square foot. So again, it's it's one of those things that big cracks, water's going down in the cracks, crumbling asphalt, where it's cloud chunks are being pushed up, things like that. So potholes and and the repairs are not, you know, getting cracked ceiling and and chip ceiling and stuff like that would not be able to be done from what I'm told. So.
Donna, can you verify for me? If I recall, there was money when I came into office from the seventeen eighteen budget for repair on the parking lot. um for repair on the parking lot. When the um the budget was frozen, when the budget wa- the budget freeze was lifted.
Yes.
Um, you were, they were told that they could go forward with this, but you needed to go through planning and zoning. And and that's where it left off, Tom. Is that correct? So so I think there's still
Yeah, I think that's where it left off. Yeah, I wasn't sure where that stood, Erica. And I I meant to ask you, but I think those funding, I think the funds were for um uh the $45,000 that was given to us by Derek.
No, they well, they weren't given to you by Derek. I mean, the town, the town put forth a project.
No, 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 the the price, the pricing was.
Right, but the project was approved and you then had to go to planning and zoning and then nothing ever came about it. And if I recall, and and Stephanie, um refresh my memory, I thought there were some issues with some abutting properties and water um flow with some of that parking lot repair and and that's what put things on hold, right? And and I think there's right now, Donna, are there still funds allocated for a project?
Erica, I don't believe so.
Where was?
Erica, can I speak on this too? I have some history on this.
Sure. I just want to make sure that there's not funds still sitting.
I am aware of, yep. Let me um, the uh the course of events you described is absolutely true. Um, but then um moving from the the points you described, uh we did eventually get through zoning. Um, when we were dealing with the 25 Old Farms property, we uh did in the zoning meetings clarify that there were no remaining issues and the the had been satisfied. Um, at that point, the $45,000 that was allocated um based on the quote from Derek was determined to not be enough money to cover the project. And then I don't remember exactly how it happened. Maybe Donna can fill this piece in, but that money was then redirected somewhere else at that time. And I believe, so it essentially zeroed out that project.
Donna, can you tell us what happened?
I believe the funding is um zeroed out.
So we're back into the general fund?
I will research it, but the money was just um, you know, used for something else.
How could it just be used for some?
It went back into the plan. Do you know what I mean? Like the money was un- carried unspent for a couple of years. And then the project just wasn't done, so the money was um, you know, it's in the pot. We'll have to reallocate it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, you were asking about the part of the history I know about. It it seemed like it was, Tom, it was a uh if memory serves an issue of, you know, the the total footprint of the firehouse when the bay was added, the extra bay was added. And that and and the amount of impervious surface that's part of that footprint and that what you did before on the lot on the side was was a stopgap to sort of address that footprint issue. So I don't know, it's uh and I know about it, of course, because I'm in a butter, but I don't know anything about the zoning discussions that went on in regard to the new property that cleared that up. I, so I didn't hear anything about it, but.
Yeah, and that's like, it goes along with both of what Eric was saying, what Mike was saying, that uh the project, that you're right, that was kind of the uh the snafu and the whole thing. Aside from the the lack of funding, the funding was there, but it was not anywhere enough. Um, so um, yeah, it was how much parking lot was removed and how much parking lot per the addition and things like that. It was it was noted to be satisfied that per the addition that was currently put on there, um that the parking lot was already removed to satisfy that impervious um square footage. So and then we determined again that we're looking at currently to just replace what's there with what's there. We're not, you know, recovering anything more.
Yeah.
Right, we're not extending it. And and there was some talk about uh removal of parking lot for future additions onto this station um which would be done at the time of a future addition. Um, and so like I said, everything was, you know, found to be satisfactory in that department. But again, that's where kind of like you said, Erica, the funding was there. Um, we determined the issues that were uh brought up to us about the square footage and the coverage and went planning and zoning. Then we went to um try and get the project done. And it was determined that uh was nowhere near enough funding, so we kind of had to start the ball from scratch. And that's where start from, start from the beginning. And that's where we are. We, you know, kind of uh along with the project across the street, taking some of the time. And, you know, trying to determine what that project is, timeframe is, um and as to how much parking lot or how much money we should sink into the the uh current parking lot, things like that all came into play. Um, but now, like I said, we do have uh the need is still there. The need hasn't gone away. It's obviously gotten worse. So again, with with upgraded pricing and again, hopefully with combining with another um project or, you know, with Public Works, maybe they could step in or help or do something and get a cheaper price, something like that. Um, but that's where we are.
Could that, does anyone know, could that be combined with um like hall school parking lot paving?
It depends on if they're in the same year. Um, and I don't have all those spreadsheets in front of me. I mean, if they're asking for them in multiple different years, I think when you take a look at the plan, we could see. I don't know what the cost savings would be there, so I don't want to speak to that for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I you know, and again, this is something that needs to be done um for obvious reasons. And we're willing to adjust the year, like you just said, Erica. If there's a project that's that's a year out or a year before, somewhere in the neighborhood um that's going to be done, uh we're certainly willing to work with with the town or whoever's getting that project done. With my experience in working with an asphalt company, um the more volume you purchase and the more volume you commit to, uh you do get better pricing. So um in terms of the work and um the grading and stuff like that, the uh excavation and then the grading and stuff like that would probably be about the same. Uh, but in terms of material, we will certainly get discounts if it's a significant addition to what we need. Hey, anything else on that one? Last but not least, we have the uh refurbishment of engine AT149, uh 1991 Mack. Um, again, I put it out at the last year and I have this on here, um only to keep it on the plan. Again, uh within the five-year mark with the current situation of the truck and the um the way it's holding out, fortunately for us, I've said this in the last couple of years as well. Uh, the truck is holding up very well. There's very, very minor issues with it uh in terms of rust and stuff where you're keeping up with the mechanicals, brakes, tires, um uh small things like that. But uh um, you know, the the biggest issues with the truck are uh things like lettering, uh lettering's fading off stickers and stuff, um which again isn't a hundred thousand dollars, but uh there is lighting that uh is getting old. We can replace them one at a time and stuff like that, which is kind of what we've been doing. Um, again, I'm keeping it on the on the books. It doesn't need it. Um, hopefully within the five years, it doesn't need it. Uh, but I'd like to keep it on the books just to hold the place for it because it's a 1991 Mack and and it does have some use on it. And um fortunately, it was built really well and this is holding up. That sums it up for my uh request.
Hey, I think that's uh Tom's last item. Anybody want to bring anything else up that they heard about tonight? And last item, if not the last time on the agenda, is ongoing projects. I don't know if there's any ongoing projects in the middle of the winter, but um.
I think so. Well, the parking lot lights are still ongoing. So I will say in the middle of winter redo, they're still working on the parking lights down at the park. Um, thanks, Stuart's frozen again.
Yeah.
Or is incredibly still. So uh Public Works, I I know Troy had hoped that they could finish up the installation of the bases today, weather permitting. The weather didn't permit so much this morning. Um, so I I um his last comment to this afternoon was they were hoping to finish up those tomorrow and then uh the vendor, um I think the lights are in and they should um be moving forward to put the lights in. Oh, here it comes again. Um, and then that project should be done relatively soon if the light poles are in. And if Joe uh were still on the call, I would ask him, but it looks like he left us.
I was down at River Road yesterday, Erica, and the bases that are installed look uh look good. And uh it looks like the uh regrade came out pretty nice and everything. So it's um.
Yeah, they'll have a little bit of repair to do and some lumen and whatnot to to do, but I I think the guy said a great job. The part, the areas of the park and for various uh engineering reasons um are in different grades. If you shoot them, they're all level, but you're going to see the bases look like they're at different levels. So some are flush with the ground, some are a little bit higher. But all our, yeah, all our guys did was put in the design that was done. Um, so if they look wrong, they're they're not, they're based on the way they were engineered. But yeah, I think they were just about done, Mike.
Yeah, I I believe there's maybe one base left.
Yeah, and the snow this morning just didn't make it so that they could spend the day out there. So I think they're planning to go out tomorrow. And I haven't heard anything from the seniors um about their projects. Those would be the other um ongoing projects. So.
Maybe.
So I know next week is like, I think we've heard all of the um requests, Stuart. Um, is there a a desire from this group? Or do we think that there's a need for maybe a field trip to look at some of these things, to look at some of the vehicles? I think it's been done in the past and I'll um defer to those who maybe um participated in in that sort of progress as to whether or not it was beneficial to really have eyes on some of those things. It's a little bit even more difficult in this uh medium, not being able to be in person with folks. But I I think to be able to see some of the vehicles that um Public Works is talking about and some of the issues with them um rather than hearing the description of them, being able to see what we're talking about and put eyes on and the conditions of some of the issues with the fire departments or out at River Road, just a thought. Um, I'm not sure how it would, it would, you know, I guess technically be considered an in-person meeting where we were going, everyone would have to mask up. Um.
Yeah, and it would have to be an official meeting that's posted as well. So it's open to the public. And that's what we did. It was probably 10 years ago now. Um, and we, I did like two or three stops a day um over the course of some months, actually. Um, but it wasn't, we did it off-season, so before, you know. But even still, I mean, you could do it on a Saturday morning, you could do it. The days are getting longer, so maybe a little earlier in the evening.
Something to think about. I'll throw it out there.
I'm up for field trips.
Yeah, it it would be helpful for those of you that haven't gone through, you know, the Public Works and crawled into their trucks. And uh I was up there several weeks ago and I was surprised how uh many repairs they've done on them and how they've been welded together and uh we're generally in very tired shapes for a lot of those uh trucks. And you could probably say with the same education about the fire departments or the hall schools, especially, you know, the condition of the walkways and things like that. If you don't want to do it as a group, you, I think you'll be welcomed by any of those organizations, just give them a call, say, can I come down and look around? Um, there's certainly some big dollar amounts here for all these projects. Um, does anybody want to do it as a group?
I mean, I would be open to it.
Careful about what kind of workload we put on an agency to have to accommodate us individually.
True.
Particularly Phil to have to accommodate six or seven different walking tours where he has to have COVID concerns with the school. Or two, and that's it.
Yeah, and I don't think they'd let us in the school during the school day.
Yeah, I can't even go in.
As far as the firehouse, the firehouse goes, I think um we'd be more than willing to, as a group, um or a smaller group. I know one person at a time may, you know, either way, we'll be more than accommodating.
You know, Public Works, uh, you know, we can take a look at those vehicles outside so we could be outside. Um.
Is a weekend doable for anybody?
Mm-hmm. It's COVID, so I have no other plans.
We're we're kind of like, you know, daylight's certainly important to be some of these facilities and trying to go out by streetlight or flashlight. May not give you the information we need. Um, we'd have to do that, what, seven days ahead of time, Erica, to post that?
No, 24 hours for a posted meeting.
Okay, even better. Um.
Seven days? That's crazy talk right there.
Oh, yeah.
Not a town meeting.
I just tried to try to plan ahead here, you know?
I mean, yeah, no. Wait, so it would be a public meeting. Um, and so we just have to post the agenda 24 hours before. Can't tell if he's frozen again or not.
No, no.
Okay.
I'm just trying to think of who we have to contact and can we get into those areas? Um, you know, typically, you know, is Troy, can he come out? Can Phil come out to open the school?
Alright, so the schools, I think Phil did a pretty good job at at showing us some photos. We can certainly see what
He did. He had a lot of photos, which were
Um, I can, you know, talk with Troy to see if there's a, you know, Saturday afternoon we could do.
The transfer station operator might be able to let us in right here on Saturday.
I I think I have a key. I mean, I don't have a key to all the vehicles.
There you go.
But I, you know, I'm sure we could work something out. Um, and and I think, you know, I talked with Troy a- about it, whether um you know, he would welcome us all in and and I think absolutely he's um open to having us take a look so that we can kind of get a sense of the um the shape of some of these vehicles that uh that he's asking for replacement on. And that that really have been on a list for a while. And again, because we put things off last year, we compounded the problem a little bit.
I found Public Works especially trying to figure out what the plan is in terms of, you know, truck A replaces truck B, which is going to go to position C. Um, you know, that they do a lot of musical trucks up there and it's a hard thing to understand of, oh, we want, you know, two big dump trucks and two little trucks. And where are they going to be used? What are they going to replace anything in addition to anything? Uh, so the explanation that Troy would bring with that would be helpful.
And I think, and I know Christina was working on her um spreadsheet um and sent it to Troy and I had to take a look at. So I I think with that and then Troy, um, you know, has given us a list of some of the vehicles. So I think, you know, that can sum it up. I I think sometimes the the thought about uh what the plan should look like and then still trying to repurpose some of those vehicles into something else, sometimes can say, instead of trading it in, we'll reuse it in this way, right? Still trying to get the most bang um out of those vehicles as we can. Maybe it's not the primary vehicle, but if we can keep using it for something else. So, you know, you go into some towns and, you know, when they get rid of a truck, they get rid of a truck and they just get uh all new trucks. We haven't done that here. We've, you know, kind of pieced together a fleet and then we have left them a little bit longer um than they than they should. So, but I think it would be, it would behoove um those who haven't seen some of these vehicles, you'd be surprised um when Troy talks about how bad it is and then when you see it, it's pretty, it's pretty impressively bad. Um, the rust, you know, I hear the both fire departments talk about the concerns they have about rust happening. And some of our Public Works trucks, it's happened. Um, you know, the the bed of the truck that Troy currently drives has a nice hole in the bed from
Like a Fred Flintstone truck?
A little bit. So, you know, someone could sit, hop in the back and and go. So but I, so I think it would be great for us um to do that. And I could ask him if he'd be willing to come out um and and do that on a on a Saturday afternoon.
One of the things, though, talking about, you know, keeping old vehicles once we upgrade or lease a new one is um a couple of things. One is um shelter, you know, and whether we're creating a a need for more garage space. And another one is maintenance and sort of what happens? Because I, you know, I'm I'm not a, I'm not a mechanic, but you know, I do know that if they're sort of lying fallow for large parts of the weeks or months, that um, you know, that that, you know, that the chances of, of them not being able to be maintained are higher. So I'm just kind of wondering, you know, what made the field trip probably will answer some of those questions about, you know, what's the big picture? Because if you've got like one point seven vehicles for each guy, there, you know, that's a lot of vehicles that are melting up.
Well, there are a lot of vehicles, but some of them are, and I won't call them vehicles, but apparatus that they use for different things. So his vehicle list, like there are twenty-one pieces of equipment, some are, and he's, you know, kind of color-coded, I know you can't see it, pickup trucks, dump trucks, equipment, trailers. So it's a lot of, it's a lot of pieces with wheels, but you know, about half the list is what they drive and the other, they do different pieces of work. And I think for, for those who don't see all those aspects of a field trip would help kind of flesh that out and see, just sometimes seeing it opens your eyes. I know for me, it did for sure.
I'm available Saturday anytime, do we want to do the Saturday for the trip?
For me.
Orlando, is this Saturday good for you? Steph, is this Saturday?
I'm just checking my calendar, my computer's a little slow and I'm on Zoom.
I might have to alter my Saturday drive, that's a, you know, big outings these days. Mike said yes, Carrie, would this weekend work for you?
Stuart, you there?
Yes, Mike.
Okay, I just want to be sure, sometimes when you're still, I'm not sure if it's, we're still frozen.
Yeah, I'm good on Saturday.
Christina, does this weekend work for you?
See who's in here, so I can let them know. I think it's okay for me too, what, I mean, what time of day are we talking about?
Like eight AM? No, I'm just kidding.
Oh, I think I've got a meeting.
I'm enjoying this first year of no children's event, so eight AM is my time again after Eon.
What about noon time or something like that? Well, we can start at Public Works and we'll make arrangements with the firehouses and maybe we can walk around center school on the outside at the same time where you're at the firehouse.
So it's Wednesday, I'll connect with Phil and Troy and Alex, I see, and Chief Snyder are still on here. If we were to venture to either of your facilities, would Saturday afternoon work for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, it'd be fine with me.
All right.
You're talking, you're probably going to start at Public Works, Erica?
Probably.
Timeframe.
I don't know that we could get, you know, everything in, but we'll start there and see, we'll try to put a couple of them on the map and.
The one o'clock is here.
Will you send us an email to confirm it?
Yeah, similar to what Heather has been doing with the, she'll, you'll get an agenda and we'll put some detail in there about where and when. Again, you'll need to wear a mask, but we'll put all that in, in the information. And it is a public meeting, so, you know, certainly the public could come, they'd have to be outside, we'd have to keep our number small, there still are gathering restrictions and such, but it could be a hot place to be, that's for sure. So.
Stuart?
Yes.
Just another topic before I forget it, as I was looking over all of these requests, I had made a comment in the last meeting about the cost of the fire alarm tie-ins to the new dispatch. And when I was going back over those, I realized that Wellington Hills Fire Station is not included on that. Maybe a communication error, maybe Chief Snyder didn't get it on the list or whatever. But I'm assuming since the, most of the other town buildings were on that proposal, we should include station forty-nine on Old Farm.
Station forty-nine just have one, just have one, I, I think it might work, the library has indicated they are not, they're going to, they have ADT and they're going to move forward using ADT as their vendor, certainly would save them funds, the rest of us would need proprietary ADT alarm system to go with the same vendor they are. So I think dollar-wise, it would probably be similar cost, so I don't know that we'd need to adjust the, the cost of the app.
Okay, just wanted to point it out that it was missing from the plan.
Yeah, and I can tell you, when I started, it was just the town and the schools and then the library asked, came to my office and then Chief Moore did the same thing. I wasn't, I was unaware that you had one of the same, so.
Mike, did you read the specs of what they proposed to do?
Was it in the packet? I didn't see it.
Yeah, I believe it was in the packet and I'd cer, I'd certainly like your input into what they're proposing.
And remember, that's just one vendor, you know, one state vendor proposal.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'll look through it definitely.
And the other one, I don't know if you were at the meeting, Mike, the bungalows at Senior Housing have been complaining about the number of phone lines they have there.
I have been down there myself, looking at it, talking with Don Berg and last conversation with him was a week or two ago. He said that they're waiting for the management company to make a decision, which doesn't seem to be forthcoming.
So just a refresher down there, they're required to have two phone lines per building times four buildings. So there's eight phone lines every month they're paying for. And if there was an alternative acceptable way to do otherwise, would certainly help somebody's pocketbook out in the long run to try to consolidate that together better.
And I think we, I, I wouldn't look included in any of this proposal, this request, because I think we determined last year that the housing authority, part of their agreement was not, that, you know, the town was not responsible for any of the new purchases or equipment. Because they'd come with a couple of requests and it was determined that that didn't fall into the agreement that they made with the, with the town at that point, so.
All righty, so we're going to make this Saturday noon time at Public Works. Our regu, other regularly scheduled meeting is next Wednesday at six thirty. Hopefully we'll have our big spreadsheet prepared by then. And also Donna usually, or somebody fills out the, the fund balance one that shows what the predicted, you know, the loss of funds up and down over the next five years, as well as Fund Seventeen and the Park and Rec Fund and so on and so on. Those are usually the documents we work with going out from here to see if what we plan is sustainable at all.
Donna, can you have those ready for next Wednesday?
Yes, I'll do the source worksheet and Erica did the big worksheet with the projects.
There's a lot of work to do on the big one, because all I did was put the projects in, so then we'll have to maneuver. And I really hope I didn't monkey with Donna's nice spreadsheet too badly, so that she'll be able to move things around. I sent it to you, right, Donna, you have it?
I think so, yeah.
All right, and Donna, unless you want to, I don't know that you have to attend with us on that weekend, but you're certainly more than welcome.
Oh, thank you, I think I will pass.
I'm just understandable, and if we could get that spreadsheet a day or two before the next Wednesday, if available. For those that have read that, it does take some magnifying glass and scrutinizing of trying to understand what the current expenses are and how far out they're going, as well as the proposed new ones.
And we'll plan to share the screen next time, so we'll be able to have it up on the screen so that you can see it.
And it is a very fluid document to start with, typically done it as our magic, as we're speaking of rearranging projects and you, whatever out years, as well as funding sources. And then we change our mind about fifteen times till we get something where it needs to be. Any questions over stuff for the next week?
One thing I just wanted to ask, Stu, is just because it kind of came up in the discussion, is there a way, or have we in the past done group together paving projects? Because I'm just thinking there's several, you know, both schools have them as on CIP and the firehouse. And, you know, just kind of wondering, have we done that before successfully? To get the price down.
For the most part, I would say no, timing is everything, both in terms of physical condition as well as budget allowances to get that done. So to get every parking lot to be in the condition to fail at the same time is a pretty good trick, but I think we're getting pretty close to it.
Well, if you don't fix them every year, you know, or when they come up, you know, they do kind of, that's why I'm wondering.
The two schools, at least two of the firehouses and the bus lot, you know, kind of everybody's asking to get some pavement done.
And I don't think they're all in the same year, I know this, one of the school parking lots, the, the lot across the street from Hall School is definitely in for next year, because they're trying to get it in with the lot, if you were, with the lots of funds. So that one's kind of set in that year, but I don't remember what the others, they're in the spreadsheet, but I don't remember what years they were in, kind of all over the place.
Well, it might be worth, worth looking at how to, you know, combine and.
And that's something we probably have to lean on, you know, either Tom Snyder or Troy to let us know how the pricing of these projects, you know, I know they have carrying costs to bring all this stuff into town to do it. So that's typically where your savings comes up, as well as if there is a break on, you know, how many tons of pavement and what type you're asking for. But the setup class for them coming to town with all that big stuff might be some savings, but I have no expertise at that, so.
I'll talk with Troy about what, you know, we'll look at, I'll sit down with him and look at the plan and see, you know, kind of pick his brain about it. And maybe he can give us some input before our next meeting or when we see him on Saturday. If we see him on Saturday and, and go from there and kind of see, we just have to remember, if we were to put those all in one year, what that cost is, even with some savings, you know, I don't suppose it's going to even look like a free parking lot, that kind of savings that we could be taking away from something else that need to be replaced in that year by doing all of those or many of them together.
And it's not like we can spread the cost out and lease a parking lot, so. And the specifications may be very different in terms of, you know, are you digging it down to dirt and repaving, which we, I've seen, you know, Tolland and Vernon doing some of their streets instead of chip ceiling. Or can you skim over the top of it or anywhere between, you know, Tom, you know, how many coats are you going to put down, how thick of each type? And it isn't just like, hey, come and pave the parking lot.
Yeah, I think you're, I think, like you said, even if the parking lots are different in terms of need, the, like you said, and like we talked about earlier, is the volume of asphalt you get a discount on because of using more than just a little bit. And again, the setup, I could certainly have a conversation at work where, I work for DelCon, we're the biggest producer of asphalt in the state, probably the nation. We do well over a million tons of asphalt a year. So it's, this would be the town, the whole town of Wellington would be a minor project for us. I could have them certainly come out, one of the salesmen come out and explain what we do or how they do it. You tend to be on the price of your side, again, in terms of, you know, bids and things like that. But again, if you, if the numbers work for you guys, it would work, you could talk with Troy, you could, you know, the salesman could come out and give you a breakdown of how they price everything and what the, what the deals would be and what they wouldn't be.
Yeah, and the more info we can have, the better, you know, and even if it isn't this year, if we don't have a paving project, we need that info for the following years of, you know, is it a two-inch base and a half-inch top coat or however that works?
Yeah, Erica, I mean, if you and Troy want somebody to.
Yeah, I mean, I think at minimum, it will help us understand if it's something we're better off trying to find a larger lump sum to do it at one time or if there's not enough savings and that we have to put other projects off. So I think knowing something more about the costs will answer the question for us, so.
I could certainly, Erica, at any time, pass your number on to have them contact you.
I'll talk with Troy, I might have to be passing the number on to him.
Stuart?
Yeah, it's fine.
There's a little.
Um, I had, I had another commitment at eight o'clock, so I'd like to go, can I be excused?
Oh, yeah, how about this, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
A second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, there you go.
Thank you all.
Stuart's a man of action.
Yeah, so.